Good evening, everybody, and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, December 15, 2020. In order to balance the health risks associated with the COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in all the interests of public health and safety, council members will be participating in an online city council meeting. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting, but in lieu of an in-person attendance, the city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in city council meetings. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please begin by placing your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, Madam City Clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Great. Haven't seen you in a meeting since last April.
Some time. Yes, nice to have you here.
May I trouble you to please call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Anthony?
Present.
Councilmember Schultz?
Present.
Councilmember Springer?
Councilmember Springer, unmute?
She's just muted. I got it. Thank you. Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Present.
And Mayor Frutos?
Good evening. Happy to be here.
Thank you.
There will be one period of joint general public comment tonight. If you would like to participate, please call now at area code 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin the public comment. Please call in. Tonight, the city council will be adjourning in memory of former City of Burbank employee Ralph Costano, who passed away on October 16th, and I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. Ralph was born in Buffalo, New York in 1946, moved with his family to California at a very young age. Raised in Burbank, he attended Horseman Elementary School, John Muir Jr. High School, and Burbank High School, where he excelled in both swimming and water polo. After graduation, Ralph joined the United States Marine Corps, where he proudly served for four years. His service took him both to Vietnam and the Philippines. When he returned to the States, he eventually went to work for the City of Burbank and rose through the ranks until he became a Public Works Supervisor. He served with the city for over 35 years and retired to Santa Clarita with his wife, Jackie. This past October, Ralph lost his battle with cancer. He was a proud man that served his country well, loved his family, and lived his life to the fullest until the end. Not only were his loyalties with family and friends, but also with his football team, the Kansas City Chiefs. He is survived by his lovely family, including wife of 30 years, Jackie, sons Kenneth, who works for the City of Burbank, Public Works Department, and Jeffrey, who is an LA County Sheriff, and brothers Carl and John. Tonight, council remembers Ralph's contributions to the city and conveys our deepest condolences to friends, family, and colleagues of Ralph Costano. And again, I apologize for mispronouncing the last name if I did it to the family. We have three announcements this evening. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission for a resident-required, unexpired term ending July 31, 2023. The deadline to submit an online application is Wednesday, December 16, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office or visit the city's website at burbankca.gov/bccapplication. Number two, the city would like to understand the community's housing needs and is encouraging residents to complete an online survey. Please visit burbankhousing.com to access the survey, which is available in English, Spanish, and Armenian until December 31. This effort is part of an updating the Housing Element, which is a state-required plan over the next eight years. If you have any questions, please contact Lisa Frank, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department at housingelement@burbankca.gov. City Council will not meet on Tuesday, December 22 and December 29 in observance of the Christmas and New Year's holiday. City office will be closed on Christmas and New Year's Day. Please join us again for our first regular scheduled meeting of the new year on Tuesday, January 5, 2021. Woo-hoo, we made it. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do. I actually have two items. The first item, I'd like to invite Mr. Patrick Prescott, our Community Development Director, to provide a brief update on the downtown, our San Fernando Road, and what are we doing to try to facilitate takeout and delivery at this time with those restaurants.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos and councilmembers. A quick update on the status of San Fernando Boulevard in downtown Burbank. Early Monday morning, public work staff removed the barricades and reopened the street to vehicular traffic. The street had been closed to traffic in order to facilitate outdoor dining for the restaurants. Given the recent state orders prohibiting outdoor dining, we wanted to facilitate takeout, so the street has been reopened. CDD and public work staff are prepared to react again should outdoor dining be allowed. A recent survey of downtown merchants indicated they prefer, the majority prefer, the street to remain open, so we will likely come up with a hybrid solution. The council previously directed staff to develop a permanent plan for San Fernando, so we will be bringing something back to you in 2021 on an agenda so that you can discuss it at length. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, and I just had one more item. I'd like to defer to the city attorney and to provide an update on our enforcement actions on businesses that are not complying with health orders. So, Ms. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and for members of the public. I'm briefly going to describe what the city's process is when there is a business that isn't complying with COVID orders by the state or the county. So if the city receives a complaint, code enforcement of the city staff first speaks to the business, reminds them of the orders requirements, it's all about education. If we receive a second complaint regarding the same business, the police will make a visit to that establishment and again attempt to educate them with the issues that they're not complying, whether it's masks, whether it's social distancing, just depends on what the complaint is. If there is further noncompliance or we receive a third complaint, then the matter is referred to the county public health office for their enforcement, and that's because most of these orders are county orders. When it comes to restaurant bars, the county and the state have tools to close a business if necessary. The county could suspend or revoke a health permit, which public health issues to prepare and sell food so the business can operate as a restaurant. The state, through the Alcohol Beverage Control Agency, which we call ABC, can suspend or revoke liquor licenses. Both actions are powerful tools that the city doesn't have at its disposal, but they also take time to process because the person that holds the license has a right to due process and they have to have a hearing and rights of appeal. Most of the cities that have their own prosecutors trying to gain voluntary compliance, some will use administrative citations like Burbank is doing to enforce our face-covering orders. Most do not resort to criminal citations because the courts have been closed, those cases take months to get anywhere, and it's much more effective to use administrative citations. The staff also further believes that it's really up to the county to bring a civil action to close a business if it is in flagrant violation of a county order. And at this point, we are aware that the county has filed civil lawsuits against a church as well as some gyms operating in the county in violation of the orders. City staff, even after we take any actions, continues to actively work cooperatively with county public health on enforcement issues and especially with Supervisor Barker's office. And so this brings us to many, many questions we're receiving about Tin Horn Flats, a local restaurant that has been operating in apparent violation of the order not to have outdoor dining. The city followed our processes, the code compliance, code enforcement, spoke with the establishment owner. The police were out at the establishment on Thursday night. We contacted public health. We asked them to become involved. We also, the police department also contacted the ABC state licensing. County health has been out there on a number of occasions so far. They have issued citations against the restaurant for operating in violation of their orders, and their next, they are considering their next level of action would be to start a proceeding to revoke their health permit. And we are in constant communication with Supervisor Barker's office as well as with public health to find out what's going on in the status. Further, as I said, our police department reached out to state license over the liquor license. They, that agency went out there on Friday of last week. They issued an order, a notice of violation, which is the start of their proceedings to suspend or revoke a liquor license. But again, they would have to give them notice for a hearing, and then the process takes time. So none of these processes will close a business immediately, and there is no immediate shut them down. That's not how it works. Everything has to go through its process. But in the meantime, the city is actively cooperating, giving information that comes to our attention to the agencies involved. We will continue to monitor what takes place. We will be giving updates to the city council. We've received numerous emails from interested citizens, and we will be sending email responses sort of outlining what I talked about here this evening. And so I know that there is a certain growing frustration that why are they still open, but there is no magic. We just switch, flip a switch and they're closed. So, but again, the council's been involved, the city manager, you know, myself, the police department, our co-compliance, we're all involved to make sure that we continue monitoring the situation and make sure what's being, whatever can be done is being done. And we will be following up with city council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney, for this very important update because the residents are very concerned. And I want to reiterate to the community that the entire city council, all five of us, will be kept up to date of the actions being taken by Los Angeles County and the state regarding Tin Horn Flats and its continued operations against the state and county closure orders. Just want to make sure the public knows. Now is the time for joint general public comment. Members of the public may address the city council on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item. If you would like to participate, please call in at 818-238-3335. And please remember, lower the volume on your television or computer, and please take your phone off speaker so we can hear you when you deliver your public comment. Comments are going to be limited to three minutes. We ask for your patience as we finish up with the next one speaker and move on to the next. To participate again, please call 818-238-3335. And remember, the council members will be allowed to weigh in after the last caller has called in. Ms. Mullins, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and if I may just have you, I believe, ask the city attorney to give us an update on closed session, and then we can take the call.
Thank you very much. Madam City Attorney, can you please get me back on schedule? And please report out what we did in closed session. Sorry, Madam City Clerk, that was my fault.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, council met in closed session earlier this evening regarding anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection D4. City has potential plaintiff there was only one case. That's all I have to report out. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I hope that picked up another two or three more callers. Madam City Attorney, I mean, Madam City Clerk?
That's fine. We do actually have two calls waiting in queue, so we're ready. Okay.
Beam them in. Let's beam them in.
Thank you.
Our first caller is Elon Ruskin. Elon, you're live with council.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. So I'm calling in reference to the closure of the San Fernando Boulevard for outdoor dining. And I just wanted to say that, like, thank you. I live in the area. It was really nice. It creates a comfortable, open plaza environment. And not only do I hope that we do it again as soon as outdoor dining becomes available again, but I think we should seriously consider just leaving that whole area pedestrianized. I think the foot traffic does retail more good than that little handful of parking spaces, and it certainly made my neighborhood a lot more comfortable to live in. And that's all.
Thank you very much for calling in. Beam in the next caller.
Our next caller is Fiel Dojic. Fiel, you're live with council.
Good evening. In the coming 2021, we citizens demand to work on the analysis of the work of the city administration by adding defining critical points in the functioning of local services government and launching initiatives to adopt procedures, instructions, and supervision over their implementation in order to eliminate the identified shortcomings. Everything mentioned above is mentioned with the aim of more efficient work of the city administration, more rational use of city property and resources, reducing the cost of greater citizen satisfaction, rebuild the schools and kindergarten to prevent the spread of the virus COVID-19, prevention of all forms of discrimination, strengthening the capacity of the civil sector as a service providers in the field of social protection, intensifying the implementation of the public health plan city moving for the periods 2021 to 2027, infrastructure improvement, economic development, development of sports, and tourism. We citizens in 2020, we have felt and seen the good progress of the city, thanks to work, Madam Mayor, city council members, city attorney, and city clerk. It was left to work on my speeches of the meetings from August 11, 2020 until today, understanding that it cannot be fulfilled within five months. It's a big project. Congratulations to new mayor and vice mayor. We promise to work together with joint work and achieve it in the new 2021 year. Good luck and success in working in the new 2021 year. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Yours, sincere, Fiel Dojic. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have another call. I will be transferred right now.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Karen Ross. Karen, you're live with council.
Good evening. Thank you for the time. My name is Karen Ross. Good evening. My name is Karen Ross, and I'm the owner of the Tally Run Restaurant over on Olive Avenue, and just wanted to see if there was any direction that city council is taking at the local level to provide businesses such as ourselves with some sort of aid. We are obviously in the middle of this pandemic, and as a restaurant, been greatly affected by the closure. We were, you know, open through November 25 doing outdoor dining, abruptly closed, and, you know, I don't think we're going to look at being reopened until, you know, maybe end of January. I'm thinking with the way that these waves of surges of cases are coming. And, you know, as a restaurateur who's been in Burbank for 62 years almost in March, very difficult time in trying to decide, do we keep our doors open? Do we close until this wave is over? You know, what do we do? And so my question to you all is, is there any local aid coming the way to small restaurants such as ours in Burbank?
Much for your call. Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, if you give me one second. No more calls in the queue, so we are prepared to close the lines.
Okay. There being no more further public comment, I now declare the public comment period is closed. Council members, would you like to respond back to any of the callers? Raise your hand, and you have the mic. Okay. Mr. City Manager, before I weigh in, could you please answer the question regarding support during the closures, please?
Sure. We'd love to contact the last caller, and I know Ms. McFarland, our Economic Development Manager, she could certainly provide specific details to the last caller's needs and try to see what we can do for her. So we have some programs, and we could certainly walk her through that and see what's available.
Mr. City Manager, if you can, just send an email on the contact and what was informed so all five council members could be advised of that call, please, via email. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. I want to thank, oh, Councilmember Springer, you have the mic.
Thank you very much for calling in. We always appreciate your calls. And Mr. Dojic, and to all of you, and to all of our residents, happy holidays and stay safe. And we are examining, you know, exactly what will happen with San Fernando. Thank you very much for the call about San Fernando Road, and we'll see what the new year brings for that. So, thank you everybody very much.
Thank you. Any other council members? If I close this, seeing none, I will close public comment period. Thank you very much for everybody that called. Moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted by one motion. Ms. Mullins, please read the consent calendar for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent calendar, item number one, consideration and adoption of uncodified urgency ordinance extending the local commercial eviction moratorium, extending the time to allow restaurants and service businesses to operate in their private parking, and consideration and adoption of resolution authorizing the continued closure of part of San Fernando Boulevard and extension of outdoor dining permit. Item number two, approval of housing successor annual report for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Item number three, adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of 2020 grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice for next, let me see, Nelloxon Distribution and Fentally Detection Equipment and Training and any future amendment excepting 14,851 in grant funds and amending fiscal year 2021 budget by appropriating funds. Item number four, approval of Burbank Hospitality Association fiscal year 2020, 2021. And lastly, item number five, adoption of a resolution approving permanent, 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 permit parking restriction for all streets in the Sarlight State Neighborhood. That conclude the consent.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would any council member like to make a motion to move the consent calendar? Councilmember Constantine, I mean Anthony, sorry. Anthony?
If I could, I'd like to pull item 1.3, just the third one on that.
Okay. Is this for a discussion or just a question?
I guess just a question.
The reason why I'm asking you is because you're new, and I want to help, just in case, just from my own knowledge, is if you have a question, we'll go ahead and ask the question, but if we want a little bit more of a discussion, then it'll be at the end of the council meeting. Just want to make sure. So is it a question, or do you want to get into a discussion about it, sir?
I think if the answer, if the question is quick and answered quickly, I don't think I need to pull it.
Okay.
Just, Mr. City Manager, if I could, the way the ordinance is written, it gives the city manager the authority to open and close the sidewalk and the street as needed if county and state orders are changing? Is that how I'm reading that correctly?
Yes, it does. It does give, provide me flexibility. So if they shut down again or we're in another position where outdoor dining is permitted, I could, we could do different things and be quick about it and be able to adapt.
Okay. Okay, great. Then I don't need to pull it. And I just wanted to make one quick comment on number three. I did find out, thank you, Mr. City Manager, I found out from the chief of police, all sworn personnel and jailers are trained in the use of Narcan and carry it while on duty. So that is fantastic, and I love that we are doing that here in the city.
And I saw Councilmember Schultz. I know your hand was up at the same time. Would you like to be the second on the consent calendar?
Yes, I was prepared to move to adopt the consent calendar.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, can you please call for the vote?
Councilmember Anthony?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six, review annual update to the Burbank Water and Power Wildfire Mitigation Plan by Burbank Water and Power Department. Mr. City Manager?
BWP.
Okay. This will be remotely done, folks at home by BWP, by Mr. Hernandez. Thank you. You're on the air, sir.
Okay, great. You see me?
I can see you loud and clear.
Okay, great. Do you see the presentation?
I can see the Colgate smile, too.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Mayor Frutos and council members. My name is Dave Hernandez. I'm the manager of the TND Engineering Section at Burbank Water and Power. I'm here to discuss the update of BWP's wildfire mitigation plan. These are the items that I'll be covering in this evening's presentation. I'll give you a brief background on the legislation associated- I'll give you a brief background on the legislation associated with wildfire mitigation plans, summary of the changes that we made to our wildfire mitigation plan. Also, the longest portion of this presentation has to do with the annual internal audit that's required for the plan. And then I'll cover briefly the wildfire safety advisory board. Lastly, I'll talk about the next steps, what we're going to do, what we plan on doing after this particular presentation. Well, back in 2018, SB 901 started it all with changing the Public Utilities Code, section number 8387, which applies to publicly owned utilities addressing wildfire mitigation. This required that we prepare and present a wildfire mitigation plan by January 1st, 2020 and annually thereafter. And that, that is basically an update and that's why we're here today. So it also requires that we accept comments from the public and other local and state agencies as well as interested parties. It requires that we verify compliance with all applicable rules, regulations and standards as appropriate. We have what's called a tier two higher fire threat, high fire threat district. And this comes from the California Public Utility Commission's High Fire Threat Map. This is an area that is deemed to have an elevated risk of wildfire. There's also what's called a tier two high fire threat district. We don't have any tier three in the city of Burbank. Now, this is a map of our electrical facilities within the tier two high fire threat district. And this is important because it gives us an idea of where those facilities lie within that tier two area and where the overhead equipment lies in that tier two area, which is indicated by the darker blue lines. Kind of hard to see. Well, that's important because overhead lines tend to have a higher risk of igniting a wildfire than underground equipment. We had a few updates to our wildfire mitigation plan. Some of these were just general updates in nature, updating historical risk drivers table and electrical assets data, which we extract from our geographical information system. There was a lot of activity with the independent evaluation and wildfire safety advisory board this year. So we, we made updates to section eight of the wildfire mitigation plan. We did add a new mitigation activity and that's included in the plan. I'll discuss that a little, little bit more and later in the presentation. And we added two new sections, one for the annual performance metrics and the annual internal audit. The annual internal audit consists of three components. First, a review of the annual performance metrics, a comparison of the best practices from the independent evaluation, which we re-reported on in late October to the City Council. We, it also includes a review of the mitigation activity accomplishments. We'll start with the annual performance metrics summary. Now, these particular metrics are, are there to gauge how effective our inspections or mitigation plan is at reducing the risk of wildfires. First of all, we had no ignitions of wildfires caused by BWP's electrical equipment. We also had no pole failures in the tier two zone area. And we believe that's a reflection of some of the really good practices that we have, such as intrusive inspections and annual patrol inspections for the, for those poles. We completed all inspection, maintenance and operation activities. And those would include things such as vegetation management, annual patrol inspections, and then even operational activities that our energy control center would perform, such as blocking, re-closing during a red flag warning condition. We had four days with red flag warning alerts and five risk driver events in the tier two high fire threat district. And I'll discuss that a little bit more now. So a risk driver event, that's an event that has the potential of igniting a wildfire. And that could be a fuse blowing, that could be a transformer failing. Those are the types of things that we're talking about. So we, we looked over 15 years and put together this data, which consists of about 50 different risk driver events that we found to have occurred in the tier two area. And that gives us a better sense of, you know, what type of risk drivers and where the, the majority of the risk drivers occurring. Over the last year, we had about five risk driver events and three of those happened to be fuse operations. And that's pretty consistent with what we've seen over the last 15 years. We also reviewed our independent evaluation report and looked at the best practices comparison. So that, that's where our consultant compared our, the best practices in our wildfire mitigation compared to what they've seen in other wildfire mitigation plans. Our consultant gave us about eight additional mitigation activities that we didn't have in our plan, but wanted us to consider that further. So four of those had to do with this design and construction activities. We're going to be performing an engineering evaluation study in 2029, 2020, I should say, 2021, I apologize for that. And what we need to do is measure or take a look at the feasibility of those particular mitigation measures and also evaluate the cost of those. At that point in time, we'll have a better determination of, of what we can incorporate into our wildfire mitigation plan. We also added the ignition work, producing work practices that I discussed a little bit earlier. And that was to limit the operational activities during a red flag warning condition. And again, I will cover that just a little bit more on another slide in this presentation. There were a few activities that were associated with our emergency response plan. It had to do with identification and communication protocols during preemptive de-energizations. So we're going to be taking a look at that and updating our emergency response plan and WMP wildfire mitigation plan as necessary. We had a lot of activity with mitigation, wildfire mitigation over the past year. So we have a number of wildfire mitigation activities. 12 of those are listed here. That's all 12. I'm not going to cover all of those right now for the sake of time, but I will cover some of the design and construction activities, some of the inspection and maintenance, and then one of the operational practice activities. That's the new one that I had mentioned earlier. But we completed 100% of our annual patrol inspections and we didn't find any abnormalities or any trends of pending failures. So this is where our line mechanics would go out and visually inspect each pole in the tier two area and quite frankly, each pole in, in our system. We didn't have to perform any intrusive pole inspections this year because those were completed over the last few years. What we did do though was provide, put a list together of poles that need to be addressed in the three to five year period. And that is what we're addressing in our deteriorated pole replacements program. And as a result of that list, we've replaced about 23 poles since this, sorry, October 1st, 2019, over the past year. We also performed pole loading assessments for wind loading on any pole that we replace. In addition, in 2019, we did perform pole loading analysis on each pole on what we call their Town 14th Circuit, along Country Club Drive. That's our highest risk circuit. And we found that one pole needed to be replaced as well as one pole needing additional guide as is shown here. Now, in order to reduce the frequency of transformer fuse operations or transformer failures, BWP reduced the criteria for overloaded transformers in the tier two area such that any transformer having a load of more than 150% would be replaced. And as a result, we've replaced 22 transformers since October 1st, 2019. It's been a lot of activity with respect to vegetation management and tree trimming over the last year. If you are in the tier two area, you probably saw a few flyers or a few letters that came out to you indicating all the work that would happen. We trimmed approximately 795 trees over the last year, as well as removed 34 problem trees. And those problem trees are trees that we would consider that could potentially grow into the power lines or fall onto the power lines over the course of a few years. As I mentioned earlier, we did add an ignition producing work practice during the red flag warning condition. So with this is, is we, we will disallow any type of activity that can create arcs and sparks during a red flag warning condition unless it's an emergency. And if it is an emergency, then stringent practices are put in place to minimize the, the risk of causing a fire. So this example here is, is a line mechanic closing in a fuse. And as you can see, sometimes this causes arcs and sparks. Lot of activity with the wildfire safety advisory board over the last couple of months. We did receive initial feedback from WASAB at the end of October. And the feedback was overall very positive to the point where WASAB had invited BWP to deliver a presentation on certain aspects of its wildfire mitigation plan at a virtual workshop that occurred on November 18th, 2020, just the last month sometime. We did receive a draft WASAB guidance advisory opinion. And what this guidance advisory opinion is, is suggestions from the WASAB as to what they would like to see addressed in public utilities 2021 wildfire mitigation plans. Now, joint comments were submitted to WASAB by a joint group of the CMUA, that's the California Municipal Utilities Association, ASCAPA, that's Southern California Public Power Association, NCPA, which is the Northern California Power Authority, and then a Golden State Electrical Cooperative. We did present our wildfire mitigation plan update to our board last, last week or a week and a half ago. We obviously are presenting this presentation now to the council and we did produce our wildfire mitigation plan. We published that on our website and we are going to be accepting comments through the end of the year. We intend to update our wildfire mitigation plan for 2021. And as opposed to actually updating it towards the end of the year, we're going to attempt to shift that up a bit. And the intent there is to, one, time it with our submission to the California Wildfire Safety Advisory Board, as well as to align better with some of the metrics that we have and base our metrics on a full calendar year as opposed to a, a year that's not necessarily calendar year that's spread out. So it'll, it'll provide more consistency for us. Now, in order to comply with PUC, BWP, we recommend that you verify, that the City Council verify that Burbank Water and Power wildfire mitigation plan complies with all applicable rules, regulations and standards. And that you direct Burbank Water and Power to accept all reasonable and appropriate comments on the wildfire mitigation plan from the public, other local and state agencies and interested parties that are received prior to January 1st, 2021. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time. And at this time, I'd like to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Council members, the floor is open. Who would like to ask a question of staff? Seeing none, I'll start the first. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Schultz. You have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hernandez, thank you very much for a very thorough, good presentation. I had a chance to read the entire 57-page wildfire mitigation plan. Light reading for anyone at home who's interested in what our utility is doing to combat the risk of wildfire. I did have a couple of quick questions. On slide number 11, you mentioned that there were four days with red flag warnings, which for the public, as I understand it, right, are days where there's high humidity, high temperatures, higher risk of a fire. My question, what was your base period? What was that within? Was that within a 12-month cycle?
It was. The base period we chose was October 1st, 2019 through October 25th, a little bit more than a year, 2020. And the reason we kind of stretched that out to a few more days, we have a red flag warning day on a COVID 25th or 26th. So we wanted to capture that in our metrics.
Thank you very much. The other thing that, that I am familiar with is a public safety power shut off, which as I understand was something that the independent evaluation had identified as something the utility should consider. Just so we're all on the same page, and for those watching at home, can you just remind us what we're talking about when we talk about a PSPS, public safety power shut off?
Sure. A, a public, a public safety power shut off, that, that is basically a preemptive de-energization by the utility. So if there is a severe risk of, some utilities would say that they would go ahead and shut off power to minimize the risk of creating a wildfire.
Thank you. And some of the other utilities operating in Southern California, like San Diego Gas and Electric, Southern California Edison, they all have a PSPS in place. Am I correct?
Yes. IOUs do have PSPSs in place and that's required by the California Public Utilities Commission, which is under their jurisdiction. That many public utilities don't have necessarily the PSPS strategy. Some are tackling it in different ways. Burbank Water and Power, because of some of the territory that we have, is relatively manageable in the activities that we've actually completed with respect to wildfire mitigation. I did not necessitate that we needed to implement preemptive de-energization strategies.
Okay. And just one final question and I'll give up the floor to my colleagues. There was also reference to covered conductors being something the utility is looking at investing in in years to come. Can you just tell us a little bit about the strategy or the thought process behind that?
Sure. Sure. So covered conductor is a strategy used to replace bare overhead conductor. So typical overhead lines will have bare, uninsulated power lines, which means that if a branch or tree were to fall into it, there's a chance of arcs and sparks. So some utilities have used covered conductor solutions, which means it's now an insulated conductor instead of a bare conductor to minimize the risk of creating those arcs and sparks. That, best practices in industry have been to look at covered conductors in maybe really tier two areas with access issues or even tier three areas. So we're going to be looking at covered conductors in our tier two area where that, that happens. And that would be basically along Country Club Drive where there's potential access issues.
Thank you very much. I have a few more comments later, but I'll give the floor up for other questions while my colleagues.
Councilmember Anthony?
Go ahead. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. I wanted to ask about slide 12. It shows five risk driver events just in the last year or so, but the entire pie chart goes back 15 years. Do we have, what's the total number of risk driver events in the last 15 years? Do you have that number offhand?
Yeah, it was, it was 50 events.
Okay, 50 events. And it looks like the two largest risk driver events, transformer fuse operation at 30% and conductor failure at 22%. Are you, we looking at ways of combating these two largest drivers? I mean, I mean, is there something we can do? What, what is happening with those, those two?
Right. Good question. We, we are looking at those items. The, one of them that you mentioned, as far as the down conductor, the covered conductor solution that we talked about a little while ago is one that would mitigate that particular risk. So we are looking at that. We are also looking at what's called a falling conductor protection, a down conductor protection where a circuit breaker would open up and de-energize the line if it detected that the conductor was broken and the conductor was broken and that there was a potential down conductor. So that is additional technology that we'll be looking at in 2019. As far as the fuses go, yes, we are considering replacing what we call conventional fuses with non-expulsive fuses. So a conventional fuse, when it operates, can expel gases. As you saw in that one picture, it can have some arcs and sparks associated with it. Where a non, or a non-expulsive fuse would contain that arc. So therefore, it reduces that overall risk. And so that, that is something that we're looking at. Just sheer replacement of all the conventional fuses doesn't reduce the risk in itself and doesn't necessarily need to be done, as in some cases, we might actually have conventional fuses that are located on the street. At that point in time, you know, there, there isn't that, that same level of risk. But we definitely are going to be looking at that. We'll have to analyze the feasibility of that type of technology, as well as the technology that's available right now, and then the cost.
Just one other issue I wanted to look at. It says 10% of the risk driver events were Mylar balloons. So that would, by my calculation, mean five events in the last 15 years. So every three years, a metallic balloon is floating into these wires and starting an event, a risk event?
Right.
Well, I wanted to ask this, Mr. City Manager, I know 12 years ago, Burbank was looking at banning Mylar balloons, and then Glendale, back in October of this year, actually passed an ordinance. Do we know what happened back in 2008? Does anybody know what happened with that ordinance, why that was put there, or what? Because that would have been just three years after the start of the risk driver event calculation. So my guess is at least one of these balloons hit between that time and that ordinance. Do we know anything about that, or no?
Is that a question, question for me, sir?
Sorry, I'm sorry. That was for the city manager. If, if the, Mr. Hess, are you available?
I'm desperately looking for somebody to answer.
No worries. You want to get back to me on that?
Patrick Prescott, we're trying to see, I know that was a question asked, so he may know. We could certainly get that information for you.
Well, let me ask, Mr. Hernandez, do you, do you know of any cities that have banned these Mylar balloons? Does it reduce these kinds of events? Is it, is it feasible? What are you, what are your expert opinion on this?
The, one city that I believe has banned the sale of Mylar balloons of some sort is Glendale, and I believe that just happened the last month sometime.
Yeah, it was in October.
So Mylar balloons are interesting because, well, when they float, that's one way that they could actually get into the power lines. But the other side of it is when they come back down, they can get into the power lines. So, you know, if we were, you know, to, what Glendale did could likely actually help us a little bit with respect to Mylar balloons on the, when they actually come back down.
I see Mr. Patrick is on the line. If you can answer Councilmember Anthony's question.
Yes, of course. Mr. Mayor, council members, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. We had a conversation about banning Mylar some time ago, and I don't believe we proceeded with that. We're looking it up right now.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. I didn't even think.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I was thinking Mylar, Mylar. Yeah, it rings a bell. We definitely had the discussion. But there was a, yeah, so I'll see if we have anything.
In 57 pages, they didn't mention Mylar, but it's right here on the pie chart. So I'm like, oh, what the? All right, thank you.
Councilmember Springer, it looks like you have a question?
About the Mylar balloons, and it seems like it came up before Mr. Somowano retired. And it seemed like I remember that they were, it was something that the utility was looking into, the banning of those. So, but that was a few months back, that, I can go through my email and, and find it. But that's, let me look, and I'll get back to you.
Vice Mayor Telemontes, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for your report. And in the plan, Chapter 8, which is page 55, under independent evaluation, would you share those comments, evaluation results with the public? Could you leave those off so the public is aware of the results?
Mr. Telemontes, was your request to share the comments under the evaluation results in Chapter 8?
Yes.
Sure. I have, I have it right here. It's, BWP has addressed each of the mandatory requirements in its WMP. BWP analyzed and prioritized its territory residing within the tier-two high-fire-threat district, maximizing impact of measures undertaken. BWP has implemented many industry best practices to prevent and mitigate against the impacts of wildfire, including, but not limited to, enhance situational awareness, poll loading assessments, blocking reclosers during red flag warnings, strong vegetation management And the evaluation conclusion is that Guide House, who is our independent evaluation consultant, determined that BWP's wildfire mitigation plan is comprehensive and meets the statutory requirements listed in PUC Section 8387, and that the plan elements align with industry standards and practices.
So I just wanted the public to understand that once again, our Burbank Water and Power Utility has raised the bar. I mean, to get these, these results, obviously, you're doing an excellent job. So thank you very much for the report. Thank you for everybody that was involved in gathering the information to make the plan as successful as it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Springer, followed by Councilmember Schultz. Go ahead, Springer.
I found it. This is from Mr. Somowano. Although the banning of Mylar balloons may not take away from the outages we have been experiencing from Mylar balloons since they travel long distance, I should note that with our investment in new relay protection system, we have minimized our outages associated with Mylar balloons. But they do produce safety risks because, beside producing outages. So BWP has been supporting a statewide ban through the California Municipal Utilities Association. So apparently, we're pursuing a statewide ban with, along with California Municipal Utilities, we're supporting their ban.
Cool. Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Hernandez, just a couple of things I wanted to clarify. So on slide 12, we've been talking about the category wire contact dash Mylar balloon. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that more of a general category? So it can include Mylar balloons, but it can also include, for example, a bird that is touching the lines and sort of acting as a conductor of like, of energy. Is that correct?
That would be a separate category. We would have any type of wire contact with an animal listed as a separate category.
Okay, and I don't see that on here. Okay. The other comment I just wanted to make, and I actually wanted to echo what Vice Mayor Telemontes just mentioned, the fact that there were no ignitions of wildfires caused by BWP electrical equipment, I think is a testament to BWP staying on the cutting edge and really being an excellent trendsetter and an example for responsible utility operations in Southern California, especially when you look at some of the other companies that are operating here. You have Southern California Edison, for example, that, whose equipment has been attributed to some of the largest wildland fires in the area. The only thing I just wanted to echo was that, looking at some of the independent evaluation recommendations, I see that approximately 44% of the ignition events did have to do with expulsion fuses. So I think when, when the evaluation was recommending that those be traded out, I think that is absolutely a, a concrete step that we can take to just ensure that our equipment is that much more safe and less likely to cause any sort of ignition event. I also, we talked about covered conductors. I would encourage the utility to explore that option as well. And while I understand that with a tier-two area that we're talking about, the possibility of needing to engage in a preventative de-energization policy is unlikely, I would encourage the utility to take a look at that, because if that were ever a scenario that BWP needed to engage in, I think it would be good for the public to have a clear understanding of what sort of notifications would be provided in advance of that sort of an event. But with that, I am very pleased with the wildfire mitigation plan, and I just want to commend you on an excellent job in putting that together.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz, and thank you for the very good feedback and your comments.
Before I weigh in, is there any other council member would like to add anything else on this agenda item? Seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and weigh in, and then I'll ask for somebody to call for a motion after my comments. So about a month ago, it was a Sunday afternoon, we had some pretty wild, wicked winds, and I live up there on Buena Vista and Pacific, and the neighbors across the street, the wires were arcing, and it sounded like a bunch of little firecrackers steady for a couple hours. And we called the fire department, but I wanted to thank the utility because the next morning, right at 0800 hours, they were trimming the trees. And it was, it was because the trees kept hitting those wires. But I just wanted to let the public know of the service the utility does provide, and I saw it firsthand with the arcing. And then literally, the next morning, there was a crew out there cutting all the trees. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank our utility. So with that being said, may I ask for a motion from a council member on this item? Councilmember Schultz, please.
Okay, I move to, and please correct me if I'm doing this wrong, it is my first time. I move to verify that Burbank Water and Power wildfire mitigation plan complies with all applicable rules, regulations, and standards. I further direct, or ask that the council direct Burbank Water and Power to accept all reasonable and appropriate comments on the wildfire mitigation plan from the public or other local and state agencies and interested parties that are received prior to January 1, 2021.
Shazam, your first motion. Who wants to second it? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Telemontes. Madam City Clerk, can you please call for the vote?
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries 5-0. Item number seven, our next report is a status update on the Burbank Six-Cycle Regional Housing Needs Assessment allocation. Will Ms. Lisa Frank, Senior Planner from the Community Development Department, please present this report? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Frutos. Good evening, council. And can everybody hear me okay? Okay, great. My name is Lisa Frank, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department, and the presentation for this item is regarding the city's six-cycle regional housing needs assessment, or RENA allocation. And we have a pre-recorded presentation for this item, and so we can go ahead and queue that up, please. Good evening, Mayor Frutos and council. My name is Lisa Frank, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight's report is regarding the city's six-cycle regional housing needs assessment, or RENA. City Council goal-setting over the last few years has resulted in the 2017 Affordable Housing Analysis and Strategy and Affordable Housing Action Plan, followed in 2019 with the city council setting a goal to facilitate the building of 12,000 additional homes over the 2035 general plan planning period. The affordable housing puzzle has been one of the focal points of these efforts, as it represents the multi-pronged policy approach to addressing the housing issues affecting our community. The city council goal-setting has been driven by a need to address the city's jobs-to-housing imbalance and related demand for housing, including housing close to the city's rich employment centers. The city's affordable housing analysis and strategy is also consistent with state law, which is necessary to ensure that the city's ongoing compliance and ability to maintain local control where possible is not jeopardized. And with respect to state law, tonight's discussion focuses on a council update regarding the regional housing needs assessment, or RENA allocation for the sixth planning cycle. The regional housing needs assessment, or RENA allocation, is mandated by state housing law as part of the periodic process of updating local housing elements. The RENA quantifies the need for housing at all affordability levels that each city and county in the state must zone for in a planning period. The RENA does not necessarily encourage or promote growth, but allows communities to anticipate growth resulting from population, employment, and household growth, so that the region and the city can grow in ways that enhance quality of life, improve access to jobs, promote transportation mobility, and address social equity and fair share housing needs. The RENA for Burbank was determined to be 8,751 housing units, based on building permits issued for this upcoming sixth cycle, which extends from 2021 through 2029. We are currently at the end of the fifth cycle. The RENA allocation also establishes the affordability level targets for new housing. This image shows a breakdown of Burbank's allocation by affordability level. Of the 8,751 total dwelling units, per the RENA allocation, 3,384 of these should be for households that qualify as above moderate income, 1,406 for households that qualify as moderate income, 1,415 that would qualify as low income, and 2,546 for very low-income households. And for reference, housing is considered affordable if it consumes no more than 30% of household income. The thresholds for each of these income levels are updated annually from federal and state income definitions, based in large part on area median income. So how is the RENA allocation determined for each city? Burbank is part of the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, a region which encompasses the counties of Los Angeles, Ventura, Riverside, Imperial, San Bernardino, and Orange Counties. The state, through the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, assigns a total housing production goal, called the regional determination, to distribute to all jurisdictions in the region based on a methodology that SCAG is required to develop using parameters provided in state law. The SCAG region received a regional determination of 1.34 million housing units over the next eight-year planning period. SCAG was then required to, again, establish a methodology for distributing the regional determination, which was subject to state review and approval. The final methodology uses factors, which are also noted in the staff report, such as household growth, future vacancy need, proximity to high-quality transit areas, accessibility to jobs, and adjustments for socioeconomic conditions, such as the existence of high resource areas. The final methodology was adopted by SCAG, by the SCAG Regional Council in March 2020, and the final allocation was adopted in October 2020. Attachment 3 to the staff report is a letter to the city from SCAG noting the city's allocation. We think it's helpful to also look at the RENA in a bigger context with some of the other nearby cities. This table is an abbreviated version from the one included in the staff report, and provides a sampling of Burbank with other cities in LA County, noting the fifth and sixth cycle allocations in terms of the increase that all cities, in this case with the exception of Santa Clarita, are experiencing in light of this regional and statewide issue. We've also included the estimated jobs/housing ratios, which as shown here notes that Burbank has the highest jobs-to-housing imbalance of the surveyed cities, a reflection in part of Burbank's status as the media capital of the world, but also indicative of the need for housing. In July 2020, staff and the consultant held a study session with the city council to introduce the housing element update for the sixth planning cycle, which is due for state certification by October 2021. Part of the study session was to establish that the housing element update and the RENA are not only required by state law, but also closely connected to the city council's affordable housing strategy. The strategy therefore provides the basis for the eventual updated housing element goals, policies, and programs where applicable. The housing element also includes the site's inventory, a required listing of potential sites suitable for new housing within the city. The inventory must show that the city can accommodate the amount of housing assigned through the RENA allocation, based on the collective zoned capacity of the sites identified. Per state law, sites must have realistic potential to be developed, and adequate sites is required in order to receive HCD certification of the housing element. Additionally, the status and progress of the general plan and housing elements is tracked annually through the required annual progress report. annually through the required annual progress reports submitted to the Housing and Community Development Department and the Office of Planning and Research, or OPR. Jurisdictions were also given an opportunity to file an appeal of the RENA allocation. The appeal period started immediately following receipt of the RENA allocation from September 11th to October 26, 2020. Attachment four to the report included the SCAG RENA appeals procedure. As noted in the staff report and identified in detail in attachment four, the criteria for filing an appeal was narrow in scope. An appeal had to clearly articulate why the requested revision, such as a decrease in the RENA allocation, would be necessary to further the statutory objectives of RENA and housing law, and how SCAG failed to implement its adopted methodology correctly, or consider local planning factors such as the jurisdiction's jobs-to-housing relationship. Ultimately, staff did not recommend that the city council pursue an appeal of the city's RENA allocation due to the consistency of the allocation with city policies, which I'll expand on in the next couple of slides. In addition, staff did not believe that an appeal could be articulated based on the narrow criteria laid out by SCAG and state law. The city's general plan, Burbank 2035, is the state-required blueprint for future growth and development. The RENA allocation is consistent with several general plan goals and policies, some of which are highlighted here on the screen. Goals one, five, and six deal with quality of life, housing, and economic vitality and diversity. This includes accommodating a mix of residential and non-residential uses that support the needs of the community, in particular the residents, workforce, and the businesses, as well as generating a variety of housing types and locations that allow more people the option to live near work, and to take advantage of the city's public transportation infrastructure to reduce vehicle miles traveled, and to reduce traffic congestion from employee commutes. The goals and policies also address the ability of the city to not only attract new businesses, but to retain the ones currently here, in part by facilitating workforce housing where those jobs are concentrated, and supporting businesses by expanding the potential workforce and customer base locally. In addition to the general plan goals and policies, the RENA allocation is also consistent with the city council housing goals, as reflected in the Affordable Housing Analysis and Strategy, which seeks to make inroads in reducing the city's jobs-to-housing imbalance, in part by facilitating the construction of 12,000 housing units by 2035, and to do so in a way that builds and protects neighborhoods through responsible development. The RENA allocation of 8,751 units falls within the city council's housing production goal, and through the housing element sites inventory previously mentioned, the city can seek to identify the majority of the sites close to transit infrastructure and employment centers. Additionally, in response to COVID-19, the city council recently adopted the Economic Recovery Plan on May 19, 2020, with the goal to revive Burbank's economy by preventing homelessness, encouraging development and business recovery, and securing financial stability for residents, thereby continuing to build a safe, beautiful, and thriving community. The goal to facilitate housing aligns with the city's economic recovery by addressing the most short-term pressing needs faced by Burbank's households while also facilitating opportunities for new housing geared towards a range of income levels. And finally, in addition to the housing element, city staff has also been underway on other long-range planning efforts, including creation of the Golden State Specific Plan and update to the Downtown Burbank MetroLink Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan. In addition to the media district and areas along the I-5 and 134 freeway corridors, these planning areas are optimal locations for new housing, helping to address traffic and quality-of-life issues, again by facilitating new housing close to jobs and transit centers while building and protecting existing neighborhoods. The RENA is also consistent with these planning efforts to identify opportunity areas and to strategically locate new housing in the city. Staff recommends that the city council receive and file and provide feedback on the status update for the Burbank Sixth Cycle Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, allocation of 8,751 additional housing units for the 2021 through 2029 planning period. This concludes the presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Councilmembers, I open the floor to any council member who'd like to start. Question, comments, I leave it up to you. Vice Mayor Telemontes, you have the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. I just got a question in regards to the numbers, the way they fall. With this new 8,751 RENA mandate, that falls between 21 and 29, correct?
Oh, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Yes, thank you, Councilmember Telemontes. Yes, the 8,751 is for an eight-year planning cycle that stems from state housing law, and that is from 2021 through 2029, a portion of 2021 and 2029, October.
Right, so, Ben, we have a goal, the council has set a goal of 12,000 units by 2035, right? So those, the 8,000 is not plus 12,000, the 8,000 is included in the 12,000 that our goal is set?
That is, that's correct. So in terms of our reference to the RENA allocation being consistent or falling within the council goal of 12,000 units over that, what was a 15-year period from when that goal was established, yeah, the RENA would be a part of that, essentially like almost the first half of it, in a sense. So it would not be, it's not 12,000 plus the RENA, it's just that the number that we were, that was identified for the city is also consistent with the goal that the council established.
So, but just really looking at the numbers, it looks to me like two-thirds of it has to be done by 29, and the other one-third, 4,000, 4,000, 4,000, has to be done by 35.
Well, yeah, the timelines don't perfectly align, but we will, when the seventh cycle comes, you know, I think at that point, we'll have to see what number we get then. If it were another 8,000, I think that would be indicative of something that we might want to look at, because it would, at that point, exceed the current housing goal that we have of 12,000. But I think the way we're looking at it is that so, with what we know so far over the next eight years, not knowing exactly how many per year we'll get, but that's just over an eight-year horizon is the goal, the production target, it gives us, it allows for us to still work towards the 12,000 without exceeding it, if that makes sense. And I don't know, Fred, you wanted to add anything?
I think, Lisa, you're on point in saying that, is that I think the report was indicating that council was very visionary in setting the goal of 12,000. The 8,751 is a, is a big ask of the city, but it's well within the policy guidelines that were provided by the council. And I think that staff, working with the community on these long-range planning efforts, at least the noted, including the housing element, that I think we can set a path to go forward to try to protect and preserve neighborhoods while we try to reach our housing obligation under state law. So it's, it's not insurmountable, we're going to do our best to do it, but ultimately, it's driven by the market to a certain extent. So if the market is in line with that number, then we'll come out the back end of eight years with the number that I think is close to what the RENA number is, but it's, there's a lot of determining factors that are yet to be assessed. But I think the council's done a great job of putting us in a position to work a plan that is in line with state law.
Well, real quick, what happens if a city doesn't meet those RENA numbers?
So what happens with the RENA allocation is first, through the housing element, well, first I would say, it's not, it's not a construction mandate. So I think state law acknowledges, as Fred was mentioning, that the, a lot of housing that gets produced is sort of dictated by the market, as well as, and informed in part by how local government facilitates and allows for housing opportunities, but in large part, there's a lot of factors that are outside of any particular jurisdiction's control. So what the RENA really asks of us is to show that we can, that we've zoned to accommodate for that amount of housing if it should occur, if the development should come forward. So it would be problematic, for instance, if through our housing element, we were only able to show enough housing sites for, let's say, 5,000 units and not 8,751. So if the development doesn't actually, if we don't actually build, for whatever reason, or if that amount of housing units don't actually get constructed in the next eight years, there's no specific, there's no punishment, per se. There are a couple other, let's say, incentives for cities to make good faith efforts to facilitate housing through, for example, SB 35, which was passed, I believe in 2017, and provided a streamlining opportunity for developers in cities where they weren't, cities that weren't as far along in their RENA targets. So there are some implications there in terms of a potential incentive that a developer could utilize for streamlining, but beyond that, and then if cities are out of compliance with their housing elements and submitting annual progress reports, there's, there's a risk for essentially disqualifying for, for certain grants through the state that could help facilitate housing infrastructure needs. So, so yeah, I don't know if anyone wants to add anything from staff, but that's, that answers the question.
Council Vice Mayor Telemontes, if I can add, and I know Amy's going to chime in probably after me, but I would say, if we make a good faith effort, annual progress reports to show that, then I think that goes, that's to our benefit. If we flat out forego doing our best to try to meet that goal and not provide for the opportunity sites within the housing element to meet that RENA number, then our housing element won't be certified by the state. And that creates a lot of issues there, because now, having our housing element out of compliance does affect our ability not only to seek grants, but to also, you know, validate that what we're doing, our general plan's consistent with state law. So that has implications legally that I know Amy can talk to, but you've seen what happens with some cities when they don't comply with state requirements on housing law, and the fact that, you know, the general can get involved in that process. So I think our, our hope is to strive to meet that goal, provide annual progress reports like we do, and come out the back end of eight years with some significant progress going forward. And I will say, in the last cycle, you guys in the last year made a strong effort to move, put the needle forward in the proper direction with a lot of units being approved, but before your effort, we had built 500 of 2,700 units, if I recall, that we were allocated. So I think the state has changed the situation from a housing law standpoint, that they're putting a lot more enforcement components in place, or non-compliance, and I, but I think your, your effort of the council is, your, your direction to us is to do what we can to meet those goals, but do it in a way that protects and preserves neighborhoods.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please, madam.
Thank you, members of the council, mayor, and public. I want to just chime in and agree with both what Ms. Frank and Mr. Ramirez have said. The whole RENA numbers is the basis for our housing element, and it's our job as staff and council's job to adopt a housing element that complies with those numbers and shows that we have identified sites and a way to actually meet those numbers. And that's consistent with the 12,000 for the council, because we already identified the areas that we want to have that growth happen in. And so now it's putting that all together in a housing element. I think the bigger issue for any city, and it doesn't matter what our numbers really are in a way, is that, you know, according to HCD, we, 97% of the cities did not meet their RENA goals. And that's when the legislature started doing bills like Ms. Frank talked about, which was SB 35. So I think there will be quite a bit of looking at cities as we go through the sixth cycle to really try to get the development and getting housing built. I mean, that's what everybody wants, housing to get built. And I think the more that, as Mr. Ramirez said, we show on an annual basis what we're doing, we're complying with our housing element, we can't force developers come to the table, but we need to ensure that we have a process that gives them a fair shot of coming in and actually being able to build. And that's what council has said they want to do in the future. So, you know, we can't predict what the, what the legislature may do eight years from now, but I would guess if they, if they don't see housing being produced, more and more will come down on us. And it's not just about RENA numbers, it's about getting stuff into production. Thank you.
You know, I was at the SCAG meeting, the regional council meeting, where we were discussing the RENA numbers that came down. There was a lot of concern from a lot of cities that the numbers were too high. And one of the comments that was made among many was the fact that cities don't build housing, developers build housing. So we as cities have to come up with some, some type of, some type of benefit for these developers to be enticed to come in to build the housing. We're not in the business, cities are not in the business of building housing. We don't have, we don't have the resources, the monies, all that, right? So we depend on developers to come in, maybe through a public-part, private partnership, possibly, but the point being that the numbers were too high, they were not being realistic. So there was a lot of pushback from a lot of the regional council members at SCAG that one day, but in, you know, we just moved forward. And I mean, the comment about that we don't build housing, we depend on developers, other sources to come in, and we can work with them to do it, to make it possible.
And that's what the state wants to see. They want to see through our housing element that we are making it possible for developers to come in, that we are not putting up roadblocks to getting housing built. So when we talked about updates to, none of these things stand alone, right, a campaign, a vacuum, but when we talk about updates to our density bonus ordinance, update to our inclusionary housing ordinance, all of those things will help in meeting those numbers. When we start talking about stuff, you know, we're in this all the time, right, with the state, looking at, are you putting up roadblocks to housing? And that's the key for, for any city at this point in time. So it's really a matter, we always say this, right, with the housing element, we set the table, we can't force you to come to our restaurant, but we're hoping that our restaurant will be enticing enough that you'll actually come sit at the table with us and start building housing.
Councilmember Anthony, followed by Councilmember Springer, followed by Councilmember Schultz. Go ahead, Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent presentation, Ms. Frank. I'm glad we didn't lose you to another city, you came back to work for Burbank, so I appreciate that. I wanted to ask about ADUs. I know we talk a lot about big developments, but what, what component of this, because we got to do, by my numbers, over 1,100 units a year for the next eight years, how big a portion of that are ADUs? Are we getting applications? Are we approving applications? What's happening there?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Anthony, and nice to see you. For the ADUs, they are, they're part of the whole package. So for our RENA and through the annual reports that we submit to the state every year that tracks the progress of our housing element implementation, including housing production, would be inclusive of any ADU production that we, that we see in the city. So in fact, the last two annual progress reports, a lot of the housing that we, in fact, noted on there, or were reported based on building permits, came from our ADU permits. And Fred, I don't want to put you on the spot, I don't have the number right in front of me, but I know we've got quite a few in the queue right now at different stages of development, and we continue to get applications every week. Something that is a little bit new for this cycle is that SCAG has actually developed a methodology for tracking or capturing the potential affordability of ADUs. So in the last two, the last two annual reports, we've not only tracked the, or counted the ADU permits, but also had our consultant conduct kind of a rent study to try to analyze, or to try to, yeah, assess the affordability level in terms of, you know, 15% of all ADUs were considered low income because of the rent survey, just as an example. So now we actually have more of an established method to track that through SCAG. But yeah, I guess I see Scott and Fred on, is there anything that you'd want to add as far as the ADU production?
Yeah, I can, I can chime in, Councilmember. So you've had what I would consider to be robust So you've had what I would consider to be robust interest and actually applications for ADUs on an annual basis. We are, over the last four years, we're over 500 ADU applications in some part of the design, development, and permitting stream. And we're averaging right now, actually, over the last couple of weeks, we've been averaging, you know, 10-plus applications on a weekly basis. And I say that because you all may be aware that not only did they limit the development standards for new ADUs, they've also put limitations on the amount of time that staff has to review those ADUs. It went from 120 days to 60 days for complete review and issuance of permit. So what hasn't changed is the number of staff people reviewing it, but both plan checkers and planners are now kind of seeing a deluge of applications and processing. So in the grand scheme of things, to your main question, yes, it's going to play an integral part in our total housing production number. It's even exceeding our early estimates that we were thinking maybe we'd end up doing, you know, about 100 a year over this eight-year period, 120 a year over this eight-year period. We're probably going to be doing more than those. So that number is going to actually help us in the long term on the production side. And it is one of the things that we, you know, and the state is looking at to be counted towards the RENA number.
I wanted to ask Mr. Prescott, we, back in 2018, before we were able to pass Measure P, we did a lot of budget cuts in the city. And in my discussions with city employees, they felt that work was piling up and they were falling behind. We did a hiring freeze, there was a lot of that happening. The year 2020 was supposed to be the year we caught up, but then the pandemic hit. Is it a fair assessment to say that we're still behind?
Yes, not just that we're behind, but that given the workload that something like ADUs present with a 60-day timeline, those suddenly become a priority. And so last week, we received applications for 25 ADUs. So now those have to be assigned. So that means that senior planners like Ms. Frank, who are otherwise working on important long-range planning things like housing element, will be taken away from that work at some point to help assist to get those reviewed, because if we don't review them, they're deemed approved, right? So it's just a matter of shifting staff resources. And, you know, we don't always choose the priority there. The state in this case chose that priority for us.
Mr. City Manager, when is the next budget review? Can we do any sort of monetary shuffling of numbers?
Well, your next budget report will be the mid-year, which I believe is in February.
Not to say how I'm going to vote on it or to say anything about my intentions, but I'd like to see an option where we can allocate money to Planning Department and Plan Check just to have that option available.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Madam Attorney.
Point of order. So, Mr. Councilmember Anthony, I understand your enthusiasm in wanting to discuss this, but this is what we talk about when we try to stay on the topic at hand, which is our RENA numbers. And at the end of the evening, you could ask for an agenda item to come back, or you've asked, when is that item coming back? And you were told, so that's really the extent. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Springer, you have the mic, followed by councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Ms. Frank, for your report. I want to kind of tag along with Councilmember Talamontis, and I've been at those SCAG meetings, and there, some of even the elected representatives of the cities in the chart, you know, were lamenting the high RENA numbers. And our increase is like 200 and something percent, but we can't complain because if you look at our jobs-to-housing ratio, it's almost three to one. So, and that's one reason why we assume the responsibility and set the goal of 12,000 housing units, because it puts so much pressure on price. And I was wondering if you could, Ms. Frank, say that, or confirm that the RENA allocation came out of the 1968 Fair Housing Act, just so people have like a little background on it, maybe our new council members, because there was some exclusionary zoning going on. So cities have to provide their fair share to, for the ability for it to be built. And in California, as I've seen, is it's becoming, like through state law and pressure from Sacramento, it's becoming more mandatory. Do you agree?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Springer. And just to go back to your question you were mentioning earlier, so I will say I'm not, I won't profess to be a RENA scholar, but my understanding, and I don't know if the city attorney or anyone knows, but my understanding is just that the housing element requirement, the sixth cycle reflects a year in time, 2020 through 2021 through 2029. And so every cycle that preceded that, if you kind of track that back, it brings you to, I think, the mid-'60s. So, but it was, I think, in large part a response to fair housing issues and to, and over the years, and specifically this current cycle with all of the recent housing legislation, there has been a larger focus on the enforcement of it. So I think for many years, it was on the books. And RENA in particular was, you know, I've been in California about eight years, and I remember when I first heard about it, and it was just this, I don't think a lot of, as many cities took it seriously. And it was sort of just almost like a guideline, but there was really no enforcement or no teeth behind it whatsoever. So I do think, yes, we're really seeing that shift to, it's not a perfect system. I don't think anybody thinks it's, well, I don't know. I can't speak for everyone, but I don't think most people think it's a perfect system, but it has been used, it's increasingly being used as a way to help address, help encourage kind of a collective effort, I would say, towards housing issues across the state and recognizing the role of local governments in that.
Right, in providing our fair share of regional housing. Like, we can't in Burbank just build a wall around us and not allow it to happen. We have to provide our fair share of regional housing. And over the years, I've just seen that become more and more mandatory with state laws. And this, we recognize that and want that it's built in a responsible planned way. And so we just tackled it, committed to 12,000 units. And that's our decision. And we'll see, our job growth is pretty amazing. Sometimes I wonder about the impact of COVID and the distance learning, and some companies are moving out of state, but they don't seem to be moving out of Burbank. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. You actually asked my question about ADUs, so thank you for beating me to the punch. Thank you, staff. Excellent presentation. I did have a couple of questions, though. I'd like to direct everyone's attention to slide number six, and this is where we were comparing Burbank's RENA numbers to other cities. And I just wanted to echo former Mayor Springer in that, you know, when I look at these numbers, Burbank's jobs-to-housing ratio just jumps off the page. I mean, it's significantly higher than Pasadena, which appears to be the next highest. I guess my first question for staff was, can you just explain why these specific cities were included on this chart? Is it because they had similarly high jobs-to-housing balance ratios? Is it because they were in close geographic proximity? Just love to know a little bit more about that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. So, you know, there's 88 cities just in LA County, so there's just a lot to kind of sift through there. I think we could have included a couple of other cities, excluded a couple that are shown here. One kind of starting point was looking at cities that are geographically very close to us, you know, Glendale, Pasadena, Los Angeles, Santa Clarita in particular, and kind of focusing around that kind of San Gabriel Valley area. West Hollywood was on there partly because, just so that we weren't, you know, we wanted to bring in a couple of other cities in the county as well. And also, it's a pretty stark number that they're experiencing as far as the fifth to sixth cycle RENA allocation. So we just wanted to show kind of the range of increases that a lot of cities are experiencing and trying to grapple with at this point. So, you know, if you were to look through the full list of all the cities, not just in the county, but in the SCAG region, you would really overall see a lot of similar trends. But if there's any other cities that the council is interested in kind of hearing more about, we can definitely look into that.
No, I definitely appreciate that. And, you know, the one thing I just wanted to note before I go to my next question is, when we do look at our neighbors in Glendale and Pasadena, you know, in Glendale, they have about 1.5, you know, jobs-to-housing ratio, 1.5 to 1. In Pasadena, it's about 1.88, almost 1.9 to 1. We're at almost 3 to 1. So I just wanted to echo what I believe were the comments of former Mayor Springer in that we obviously have to take this very seriously. I think the state is going to be watching to ensure that we do tackle our housing crisis, but I also think that we need to do it in a way that makes the most sense for our community. The next question that I had is actually going back to, I think it's slide number four, and this was the chart, if you will, that's titled Allocation by Affordability Level. And I just wanted to confirm, so of the 8,751 RENA units that are allocated to Burbank, if I'm adding this up correctly, about just a hair over 45% of those units are calculated as being necessary for low-income and very low-income occupancy. Is that right?
Yes, Councilmember Schultz. I didn't do the math right now, but yes, that sounds right to me.
Okay. And I guess this is more of a, just a note to file since that's what we're doing today, but just as I am noting my observations, even if we include the moderate income level, we're talking about 60% of our housing need being needed for folks that are at the moderate or lower-than-income level and not necessarily market-rate housing. So I look forward to future conversations with council about how we can do this strategically. I just thought that those were really important numbers to highlight, and I really appreciate you all entertaining me, because it's easy to talk about the top-line number, 8,700 units, but when we really start looking at where we need that growth to go, I just was, I found that very interesting, and I'm sure that the public does, too. But with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your indulgence. I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Councilmember Springer.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz, for that observation. It was just at a recent meeting, but that is a huge issue because it costs us half a million dollars, costs half a million dollars to build a unit. And therein lies the problem. And so we have to think creatively about how to reduce the costs of, so that we can meet those lower-income thresholds.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, Councilmember Springer is right on. Last month, I believe it was in November, the inclusionary housing report and the density bonus reports, I mean, these are, you know, tools that help meet that number. And, you know, looking at the total doesn't fill in all of those details. So, yeah, moving forward, I think looking at every little piece is a key component of that.
Councilmembers, before I add my little two cents on this agenda, if everybody's finished questioning and comments, I will just weigh in with mine, and then I'll call for somebody to call for the vote to note and file. My only thing for the benefit of the members of the public is looking at our sixth-cycle RENA numbers. Obviously, Burbank, we're looking at 8,751. But for the folks that say that Burbank is the only one that's really developing, and when you look at, read this report, if you look at the mandates or the recommended sixth cycle, is Glendale, they've got basically 13,391 additional units to add per this report for the sixth cycle. Our other neighbor, Pasadena, they're at 9,409. And West Hollywood, which is probably three square miles, they're looking at adding 3,923. And I only bring this to the members of the public for their information is that we on council, all five of us, listen to you about building our city and overbuilding, which is an important concern and topic for everybody across the city. But as like the other council members already said, these are mandates from Sacramento that it makes it real hard for us on trying to balance, you know, the sustainability of our city, trying to balance out safe neighborhoods, and trying to meet the important imbalance of housing, not just for workforce, but also for those that really need housing in our city. So I appreciate the discussion, councilmembers. You guys have said a lot of points that I was going to say. So if anybody would like to make a motion, and a second. Vice Mayor Talamontis?
Mr. Mayor, I just moved that we know and file.
Okay. Second by who? Councilmember Anthony or Schultz? Who said it? Okay.
I think I did.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Schultz. There's no need to take a vote. We move on. Moving on to item number eight. Our last report for tonight is the appointment to city council members to different committees and liaison roles for 2021. Will Christine Ellis, our analyst from the city manager's office, please present the report? And sorry if I butchered your last name.
You pronounced it perfectly, don't worry.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Frutos, members of council. Christine Ellis, analyst with the city manager's office. Tonight's report is for the appointment of members of the city council to the 26 committees and coalitions listed on attachment one of the staff report. Members of city council are appointed to participate in a variety of organizations, serving as members or liaisons to represent the city's interests and report on the activities of various entities to city council and the public. A description of each organization is available in attachment two to the staff report, as well as the council liaison definition of role and purpose in attachment three, which council adopted in June 2018. On an annual basis after reorganization, the council updates these assignments. The most recent addition to the list is the Racial Equity and Diversity Subcommittee, which council created on December 8th, along with approval of the action items presented by the Burbank Human Relations Council to promote racial equity, diversity, and inclusion in the city of Burbank. Staff recommends council appoint two members to the subcommittee. Absent from this year's list are certain ad hoc committees that were formed as temporary measures to address specific issues. The list no longer contains the ADU Ad-Hoc Committee, which was created in January 2020 to provide council input on the city's ADU ordinance, which was subsequently adopted in February. Furthermore, the list does not contain the I-5 Subcommittee, which was created in October 2019 and is currently active, consisting of Vice Mayor Talamontis and Councilmember Springer. The committee was created as a temporary ad hoc body to discuss issues relating to the I-5 Empire Interchange Caltrans Project. And as staff is currently working on scheduling another meeting between the Subcommittee and Burbank's elected representatives, staff recommends that council maintain the current appointment of Vice Mayor Talamontis and Councilmember Springer to the I-5 Subcommittee. That concludes my brief report, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, or council may proceed with making appointments to the entities listed in attachment one.
Councilmembers, what I'd like to do is, we all have the report in front of us, so I'll just call out the number. And if there is already a council member on the list that would like to step down from that one, then I'll open it up to whoever would like to be a part of that. I'll probably use seniority, but when it comes to our two new colleagues, I'll probably use the largest vote getter, if that's fair. It's just we got some type of little rule to make it happen, and we'll move forward. So, starting on number one, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we have currently Sharon Springer and Jess Talamontis. Would you like to remain on there or step down? If I can hear you, so other councilmembers can hear you, just say yes, I'll stay, or no, I'll step down.
I'll stay.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to step down.
Okay.
They'll make a vacancy.
Okay. So would anybody like to be a liaison for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee? Councilmember Anthony?
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay. Christine, you have that? Moving on to item number two, the Airport Ad-Hoc Committee, that will be the mayor and vice mayor. As- and vice mayor, as in the past. Number three, the Audit Committee. I wish to remain on it, and that creates a vacancy from former councilmember Murphy, who would like to be also part of the Audit Committee. Seeing nobody? Okay, I saw Councilmember Springer. Got to go by seniority, sorry, Schultz, sorry. Vice Mayor?
I'd be interested.
Oh.
I'll just have it.
Okay. Then it'll be myself and Vice Mayor. The number four, Economic Development Subcommittee, we have Vice Mayor, and we need one volunteer. I see Councilmember Springer. Sorry, Schultz, we'll get you there.
That's all right.
Number four, Economic Development Subcommittee, we have, oh, I already covered that one. Sorry, my fault. Item number five, Fiscal and Treasures Review Group, myself, and I will have a replacement for Councilmember Emily Gabelletti, who would like to also be part of that. The City's Financial and Treasures Review Group. Any takers? Seeing none? I'll be, okay, Councilmember Schultz, you'll now be partners on this one. Outstanding.
Looking forward to it.
All right, me too. Okay, number six, the Public Information Office Advisory, it's myself and the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. Number seven, Racial Equity and Diversity Subcommittee, I'd like to be there as the mayor. And who would like to be there second? I see Councilmember Springer. Thank you. Moving on to number eight, the Arroyo Verdugles Committee Joint Powers, I have Sharon Springer. Would you like to stay on there? We have a vacancy. With the two new colleagues, would you like to be interested in serving on the Arroyo Verdugles Committee's Joint Powers with Councilmember Springer?
I'll do it.
Okay. Thank you for stepping up. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you.
Item number nine, Disaster Council, myself and Vice Mayor. Is that okay? Okay. Number 10, the Domestic Violence Task Force, we have an opening since Councilmember Emily Gabelletti is no longer on council. Madam Sharon Springer, would you like to stay on there? Who would like to also be part of that? Councilmember Anthony, thank you, sir. Number 11, the League of California Cities Annual Statewide Voting Delegate, myself and Vice Mayor is the alternate. Number nine, League of California Cities LA Division, myself and Vice Mayor. Number 13, the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments, I have Council Vice Mayor. Would you like to stay on that?
Yeah, definitely.
And we need an alternate to replace Tim Murphy. Sharon Springer, thank you very much. Number 14, San Fernando Valley Service Sector Governance Council Metro, Jess Telemontes, you wish to stay on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Number 12, Southern California Association of Government SCAG District 42 Representative, I see Councilmember Telemontes, and I need an alternate, which is Councilmember Springer. You will be on there, Vice Mayor?
No, let me, let me make a point of clarification. We are rotating bases with Glendale.
Okay.
So for the next two years, we're off.
We're off, so no need to fill number 15.
No, you don't need to fill.
Christine, you got that for this year? Thank you, ma'am. Number 16, Southern California Association of Government SCAG Annual General Assembly Voting Delegate, myself and Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Number 17, the Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors, I need two council members for that. I will be stepping down off that one. Okay, Councilmember Schultz, and who will be his partner?
Can you give a quick description on that one real quick?
The Valley Economic, oh, Christine?
The Valley Economic Alliance is a private nonprofit economic development and marketing corporation. They serve a five-city region, Burbank, Calabasas, Glendale, LA, and San Fernando, and they seek to elevate the economic vitality and stability of the region. So they promote business, business education, outreach, and collaboration with local governments.
So are they independent? They have their own budget? They just do stuff for the cities to?
They do. Councilmember Anthony, we pay a membership, but you're part of the board and discussions, and, you know, you put your input of, you know, basically the economics of the San Fernando Valley. Would you like to be on that, sir?
Uh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
And who would also like to be there with Councilmember Anthony?
Oh, I believe I said I would.
Oh, good. And Councilmember Schultz, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're rocking and rolling here. Number 12, Board of Library Trustees, I wish to stay on that. Number 19, Burbank Culture Arts Commission, Vice Mayor, you wish to stay on there? All right.
Right, yes.
Number 20, Infrastructure Oversight Board, I wish to stay on it. Mr. Vice Mayor, generally, you get the first pick if you wish to be there with me, or?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you. Number 21, Park and Recreations Board, we have an opening. Who would like, okay, Councilmember Sharon Springer. Number 22, the Police Commission, I wish to remain on the Police Commission, but that brings a vacancy. Councilmember Nick Schultz, it'd be great working with you. A cop and a lawyer. I like it. Number 23, the Very Important Senior Citizen Board, we have Jess Telemontes nodding his head, he still wants to be there. And a second will be Councilmember Sharon Springer. Number 24, Burbank Sustainable Commission, I wish to remain there, but we have an opening for Councilmember Murphy's position. Who would like to be there with me? Councilmember Schultz, all right. Number 25, Liaison with the Burbank Association of Realtors, myself and Vice Mayor, which, okay, I see a nod. And then obviously, the Burbank Chamber of Commerce will be myself. And that completes our liaisons and agenda. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you. Oh, yes, ma'am.
You know, there's, I usually go to the Transportation Commission, it's not on the list. And when I spoke to city management today, they said, you know, maybe bring it up.
Perfect.
Because it's a, so I've always gone to those. I was surprised it wasn't on the list. I thought I was a liaison.
Thank you for being the liaison on the Transportation Commission. Would anybody just like to join her?
Yeah.
Anybody? Going once?
I've been there so much, I might as well just keep going.
Perfect.
Can we make that? Is there a way to make that an official appointment, or?
Hang on, standby, Mr. City Manager, I see.
First, I think it's important for you guys to establish that you will have a liaison or two liaisons for that Transportation Commission, and then make the appointment. So make it formal.
Okay, got it, thank you. So following protocol, Madam Councilmember Springer, can you make the motion to make that a liaison position, please?
Yes, I move that the Transportation Commission has two liaisons positions.
May I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anthony. Madam City Clerk, can you please call for the vote?
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz? And Vice Mayor Telemontes? Mayor Frutos?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Springer, for bringing it up and standing up and joining, Councilmember Anthony. Now, that takes us to council comments. This is, this is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Who would like to start? And don't look at me, because I got to go last now. Councilmember Springer?
Yeah, I'll start. Okay. We went for a photo op to the plaque for the Facebook of the Western Channel Bike Way. And I, last night, went to the Planning Commission meeting just through the public comment, and then I left there and went to the P Flag meeting. And that wraps it up for me.
And Councilmember Springer, I also like to take this as an opportunity, since it's our last council meeting before the new year, if you wish to say any greetings or?
Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
I am? How can I be on mute? Hello? Hello? Sorry, technical difficulty. Can you hear me now, Councilmember Anthony? Councilmember Springer, because this is our last meeting of the year, and this is during brief council comments, if you'd like to, at this moment, wish a holiday greetings to our residents, please, this is the time to do so for all councilmembers.
I wish everybody safe and happy holiday with families, friends. Just remember that the COVID-19 does not exempt holidays, doesn't take breaks. So we have to be, as much as we're tired of it all, we still have to be vigilant, and we have to practice safety protocol. Thank you very much. It's been a great year. I look forward to a better one in 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you want, I think you just heard?
I just heard, I just got a point of order. I need to go back to the previous agenda item. I was too excited to move forward. It was really great working through that item. Would somebody like to get me back on track by asking for a motion to vote for all the appointments as an official action? So would somebody make the motion, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the appointments to the different boards and commissions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sharon, Councilmember Springer, thank you. Madam City Clerk, thank you for bringing me back. Can you please call for the vote?
Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who would like to follow? Councilmember Springer, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, we did a couple of things. We did the plaque ceremony presentation, and also we had a community meeting with the LA County Supervisor Catherine Barker, which turned out very good. I was very impressed with all the feedback that we were giving the supervisor, as well as what she was letting us know what she could do to help Burbank. And I too would like to wish happy holidays to everyone out there. Stay safe, you know, maintain your social distancing, remember to wear your facial coverings, and don't forget to patronize local restaurants. That's one of the ways they're going to stay above water. We have to do our duty as well by patronizing. I know we can't go in there and sit down and have a fun time like we have in the past, but at least you can order from them, pick it up, and bring it home, and have your fun time at home. So once again, happy holidays to everybody, stay safe, and we'll see you next year.
Okay. Councilmember Anthony, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just, you know, it's such a difficult time with the pandemic and with the holidays around the corner. Hanukkah's on us now, we have Christmas coming up, I mean, New Year's. I just want to take a minute to point out that we are all under stress. Everyone is dealing with something going on with this pandemic. It has affected our livelihood, it's affected the economy, the way we interact with loved ones. We can't even go see our relatives. I just want everyone to know that we're all there with you. We get it, we feel it too. It's been very difficult at my house, it's been very difficult at everyone's house. And we will get through this. 2021 is going to be a much better year. I guarantee it. So just hang in there for just a little bit longer, we'll make it through.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So many, what I wanted to say has been mentioned by my colleagues, but I just want to emphasize how appreciative I am to be here. I look forward to my committee assignments, reporting back next, at the next meeting. And just in closing, I want to echo what all of you have said. I wish everybody who's watching tonight a happy holiday season, a very happy new year. My wife, Al, and I will have all of you in our thoughts as we're going through this holiday season together. And just to emphasize, if you have any shopping left to do, please shop local, please buy local, please frequent our restaurants. And even though it might feel isolating right now, we live in the best city in the world, and we have each other, and you have amazing staff members and council members here who are working around the clock on behalf of your, on your behalf. So I think there's a lot to take stock and be very appreciative for, even in these dark times.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'll go back, starting on Wednesday, the 9th, I attended our plaque, council plaque dedication for the new Burbank Channel Bike Way. Right after that, I did a walkthrough of the actual channel bike path and addressed some important concerns that the residents have echoed to me with our assistant city manager, Judy Wilkie. I also attended the meeting with council with regard of Supervisor Catherine Barker. I met with our mayor, and we discussed issues of the city and important stuff that she wanted to relay on me as hopefully the new mayor, which I am now. Thank you very much, Madam former Mayor Springer. And obviously, the Burbank City Council reorganization. I echo all the sincerity that my councilmembers have wished upon our community, but I ask everybody, please, if you know a veteran, make sure they have a hot meal during this holiday season, a warm blanket, a jacket, check up on them. They served our country. A veteran, a senior, if you know they live home alone, give them a little door knock, wish them a happy holiday season, but be our best stewards of our community, because we can do it. But from the bottom of the Burbank City Council's heart, we all wish you a great and prosperous holiday season and a brand new year, because I can't wait for 2021. This has been one tough year. Okay, moving on. Councilmembers, now is the time to introduce any additional items. Do members of the council have any items they wish to introduce? Councilmember Anthony?
I want to try to do this right for the budget coming up.
Just no discussion, just no discussion. Just ask the question to put on the agenda, please.
I'd love to see during the next budget discussion, some options for ADUs and the process by which those are approved, and if it's at all possible to include the pricing for small-scale developments that aren't ADUs, things that would not be qualified as ADUs, because those small-scale developments are also, you know, part of our housing. So those two. And then, can we do something to help with the Mylar balloon business?
Can you just, Councilmember, if you can just make it one point, if that's what you want, Mylar balloons on the agenda?
Oh, right, sorry.
Sorry, I don't mean to correct you. So the city attorney is looking at me to weigh in, so the eye comes out at me. Okay, anything else, Councilmember Anthony?
Yes, if we have, I don't know if it's coming up, a discussion, just a report back on the state of our restaurants, the state of our small businesses.
You got that, Mr. City Manager? I see a nod, it's on the future agenda. Any other councilmember wish to weigh in? Councilmember Schultz, you have the mic, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would like, I know we had one recently, but I would like council, I'd like staff to bring back an update on our economic recovery plan, but more specifically, I would like them to bring recommendations regarding the creation of a task force, or alternatively, a commission or committee, similar in structure to our Domestic Violence Task Force, which has a community stakeholder participation and input.
Mr. City Manager, you got that, sir? I see a nod, it's on there, sir. Any other councilmembers wish to add something to the agenda?
Oh.
Okay, seeing none, then I move toward the adjournment. We now adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, Vice Mayor.
Just before you go to the adjournment?
Yes, sir.
Ralph's last name is Costanzo.
Costanzo, thank you for correcting me, Costanzo. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we adjourn in memory of Ralph Costanzo to Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting through an online meeting process. The public may view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways. By leaving an e-comment on the city's webpage, burbancca.gov/ecomments, or by emailing the city council directly at citycouncil@burbankca.gov, or by calling in directly to the council meeting at 818-238-3335. Thank you, and on behalf of the council, again, we all wish you, the five of us, a very happy holidays and a very happy new year, and 21 will be a lot better. Good night, everybody. Good night, councilmembers.